Okay, welcome back. Happy New Year. I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Tuesday, January 7, 2020, and the time is 5:00 p.m. I will have a roll call starting from my far right.
Janne Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perlowert.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. All rise. Vice President Beckham will lead us in the process.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So, Board Member Kravitz makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We move now to our first action item for a reorganization of the governing board. Do you have any discussion or comments on our reorganization?
Or we could open it up to nominations for president first.
Board Member Kravitz.
I nominate Allison Beckham for president. Thank you for the nomination. This year, I actually would be interested. So I did prepare something. First, I would like to say that Patty Beckman has done an excellent job as president, especially with the additional challenge of accepting this position during her first year on the board. So thank you so much for that. I believe Board President Beckman has provided a solid foundation for the governing board to build upon. If you decide to vote for me as your next president, I plan on continuing the momentum of moving the district forward in a positive manner, as I believe that Board President Beckman has done. I would like to share with you three areas I see as short-term goals as president. First is to support Dr. Krieger in making his last six months successful, to accomplish the priorities established by Dr. Krieger and the governing board. As you know, I believe there is a sense of urgency to keeping the momentum going because our students deserve the best education possible now, not at some unknown date in the future. Number two, to support effective communication. I believe effective communication can be modeled by leadership, which means it starts with us, the governing board. Patty Beckman has had some great ideas last year, and I hope to bring them to fruition with her support. One example is the opportunity to meet with your governing board, whether it is coffee or bagels, with the governing board on a quarterly or biannual basis. I know we each strive to be open, transparent, and accountable, and this would give another opportunity for our community to meet with us and for us to hear their voices. Another example is the board retreat and evaluation of the governing board in the next 30 days. Number three, continue to advocate for collaboration from SUSD students, teachers, parents, administration, and the community at large. The governing board should always be striving to improve the student's school experience and academic achievement. Our society, economy, and students' lives are dynamic, and so should their school experience. As leaders, we need to lead by example and bring innovation, opportunity, and model participation. I have ideas on how we can make this possible. I have worked with six fellow board members in my three years, and I can guarantee that each of you and them have gifts and talents that differ from each other and that make us stronger as a team. We need to leverage those strengths to our advantage and not dwell on our weaknesses and mishaps. The reason I bring this up is because I would like to make sure our strengths become our assets as a governing board, and we can use them to the best of our ability and for the betterment of our district. It will be a goal that each of us leads in our role as a governing board member. I would provide more on that later. I would be honored to serve as your president if you so wish. If not, I will continue to be engaged and positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussions or comments? Board Member Greenberg.
I actually don't really remember. How does this process work? How does this process work again? Do we vote on each nomination, or do we nominate everybody, or how does this work?
If anyone else has a nomination, you should hear that first, and then you can look for seconds and votes.
Ask for a motion.
Probably should have a second to the first nomination.
Oh.
No, there's a nomination, then you have to make a motion, then you have to have a second.
Yeah, you should have a second to the first nomination before you go to the next.
You need a motion after the nomination.
Can the same person motion?
Nomination, motion, and then second.
Board Member Kravitz.
I would consider a nomination.
Well, because they could refuse the nomination, or you could have other discussions.
Board Member Kravitz.
I motion to elect Allison Beckham as board president.
Okay, so do we move to the second now?
Any second.
I'll second that.
Board Member Greenberg seconds then. All in favor?
Well, wait. I have another nomination. Is it right? Is this? I'm really confused. Can I nominate it? Wait, yeah, now I'm lost. We have the second, then we have another.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to renominate Patty Beckman as the board president. Is that right? Am I doing this right?
Right.
It's never dull.
It's never dull. Well, do you have anything?
Again, she would comment. Sorry.
Done it a few times.
You would either accept that nomination, give your reasons for wanting to be president or not be president, and then, again, a motion would be made on the nominations on the table. Sorry.
Okay. Gosh, I'm always in the hot seat.
Well, respectfully, I think, you know, we all breathe certain values of dignity. Board Member Beckham, I absolutely think you have such some amazing qualities and are an outstanding board member and president. As last time, as it was last time, this time as well, I would be prepared to continue on. I wouldn't decline it. I think this district continuity piece and the making progress piece is important, and I think that while you would be fantastic, I also think our community is appreciating some continuity and the direction that we're going. So I appreciate the nomination, and I would continue on if that's what this board desires and votes for. So either way, I don't think it's a bad direction. But it was an interesting turn of answer. Okay, so how do we... Is there a second?
Is there a second? Tyler's second here. Okay.
There needs to be a motion.
I move the nominee.
Well, actually, we have a motion on the table and a second on the table. I think you'd have to vote on that first.
You had a motion and a second, and then you had another motion.
We had another nomination.
Right, which is a motion.
Which is a motion.
Okay. Yeah, exactly, because someone could say no, and it could change.
Now we need a motion there.
So now we have to vote on the first motion.
Yes. Take a vote on the first motion, please.
We don't need to make a motion. There's no motion.
It's been motioned and seconded.
It's been seconded. Allison Beckham.
I think that...
Okay, are there any other nominations?
And then if there are not, you close that out.
Exactly.
Any other nominations or discussion or comments?
Just to clarify, we can't delve into the vice president at this time, correct?
That would be after.
That's my understanding, that we have to kind of wait.
Well, I'll just comment that I... For me, it really could go either way. The one thing that has it for me is just the stability because for a fact, I don't know what the three of you intend to do, but for a fact, the board president and I, assuming, unless something, God forbid, happens, are on the board for the next three years. So I think from a continuity perspective, just bringing in the new superintendent, since we have board members who will still be there for sure, that for me, it makes sense more to vote. Patty's point makes sense in deciding that she would continue, but that's all I'll say because I really, I don't think there's any detriment in quality, let's put it that way.
I don't think so either. And again, you know, I was cut off guard there, but humbly and respectfully, I will serve in any role that I find myself in. It was a learning curve last year, becoming a new board member and serving as president. I would say, and the reason I think that I would want to step up again is because I feel like it went well. I feel like I'm getting traction. And so respectfully, I would be grateful for another opportunity to continue on and not just be in that first year. But again, I think we're making progress as a board, and so I appreciate whichever way this vote goes. So what do we do?
Ask for a vote.
All right.
First motion for Allison.
All in favor of Allison Beckham serving in the role of president of the governing board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That was four.
Okay, so the motion passes five to zero. We got there, yeah. Okay, congratulations then.
Thank you.
So now we move on to vice president, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion for vice president? Nomination. Board Member Perlowert.
To the points that we all just discussed and heard of that continuity and the strength, I will happily nominate currently President Beckham into the role of vice president. I think that serves that purpose well, and it would be a great team.
Okay.
So I will make that motion, unless there are other nominations.
I accept that. Are there other nominations?
So you made that motion, to be clear, and you seconded?
Second. If there's any other nominations, we're going to have to wait on a vote.
So my comment to that would be the same comment I made about the continuity, that I support that, but then the problem... The only problem I see is, again, I don't know what you guys are doing, or I can't pretend to predict election results. God knows I got it wrong in 2016, but it's that if we have a new board, then we have one person who has any experience in that leadership role. Does that make sense? I mean, Patty is the only person then out of five board members coming in 2020 or 2021 that has that experience. So that basically ensures that whether she wants to or not, I mean, who knows what she wants to do in two years or in one year or two years? That that's like, that would be it. So if she didn't want to do it in a year to be vice president or president because she had other work to do or something, then we have an entire new team in that leadership role.
Can I just let you know? Okay, they will be, unless they run again.
Right.
Their term expires December 31st.
Correct.
The first meeting in January.
Right.
We do reorganization.
Correct.
At that point, unless Allison decides to come back and run again and win
Right.
as a board member, if those three were not here, Patty as vice president would, at that first meeting, act as president.
Correct.
No, 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 that I know, but I'm talking about more succession planning generally.
Oh, yeah. It'll just be you and Patty.
That there is only...
We don't have succession planning.
Well, what I'm trying to point out is Patty could say, you know what, I have a new job as a CFO to another player or whatever, and the demands of that do not allow me to spend as much time as I have been. So then we have a new president, new vice president, who have no experience. Now Patty has handled that extremely well. I mean, we all have, it's like, that's not... But at the same time, the VP was somebody who had been here for two years already and had been working on the board. There were people in place. So I don't, that's my only point on that. And, you know, I try to plan for the future. I don't... That's my only comment on that.
Board Member Beckham.
To that point, I think that my number three was to that very point. I think in the historically, the only thing I can talk about historically within my term is that we've been very individualistic, and it'll still remain that way, but I would like to see more participation. Because typically, the vice president, especially if the president is at every board meeting, like Patty Beckman was, I think, at one, and I think it was just an executive session, I never stepped up or got any true additional experience than as if I was an individual. So I would like to change that, but not just for the vice president role, but also with the individual members' roles. And maybe we step up and participate a little bit more in policymaking because that is what we're...
Right, and so I think that's my...
So I think that might give you that experience.
Well, but I think that actually, I think that's more of supporting my point on the issue that if it's that way, right, then, I mean, Patty... Patty did it because she was nominated, and she's extremely capable of doing that. I mean, it's a very particular job to be the president, and I'm very confident you're going to do very well at it. But that doesn't mean that everybody is fit for that job or good at it or doesn't need the learning curve help. So I just don't, I just don't know unless if we're all going to be involved now in these meetings for planning things and doing that. I mean, I think that's kind of a hard thing to do. I mean, I think that's kind of the point between the president and the vice president, that relationship. I mean, that's kind of why I thought I nominated the president and vice president, was that the two of them worked and then would support each other and bring it up. But, I mean, I just think it's kind of an eggs in one basket from my perspective, but I don't know if you guys agree or disagree.
Well, I can say just from experience, I think that the majority of the individuals that run for the governing board have had either nonprofit board experience or experience running and managing and planning so that they could be prepared, that they're pretty prepared for that role. Doesn't mean that the new board coming in may not, but I have confidence that, at least in the past, that I think that the professionalism of the individuals has been there to be able to do it. But I understand your point because I do think succession planning, preparation is important.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
We have a second.
You have a second already.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For vice president.
Aye. I said aye.
Motion passes five to zero. So now I suppose we take a five-minute recess like we did last time?
Yes. And you could change seats.
Okay. All right. It is 5:18, and we will... Oh, yeah.
Yes, you do.
That board member. And then also, also email is a real tricky thing because it's a good way of getting out information to board members. It's not meant to be a conduit for discussion amongst board members because that clearly is a violation of the open meeting law and it's one that's pretty easily proved. And there's a lot of possibility for an innocent violation there where you didn't intend to violate the open meeting law with the reply all function. Sometimes it's just, you know, you're meant to reply to the original sender, which may be the superintendent, but if you hit reply all and you, you know, and that happens more than once, then you do have discussion that's going on. So you want to be careful about that and there are a couple tricks to do, to avoid that. One we suggest is that you actually put on the board members' names on the blind copy if you were, if there was something come out from the board secretary or the superintendent, and you would put in the body that they were going to all board members. So if you actually accidentally hit reply all, it wouldn't go to everybody. So that's one of the options you can do. Any questions so far? Okay. So feel free to, to, to jump in if you got them. So also, there's an issue, again, we talked about the, the physical proximity is not required under the law, but you can violate the, the law if you have a series of one-on-one conversations about the same subject that's intended to lead to a decision. That's what we call the walking quorum issue, where board member A talks to board member B and then board member B goes to board member C or D and has the same similar conversation. And what you've done is strung together a quorum about the same issue in, without a notice of the, under the open meeting law. It's the same, it works the same way if the superintendent is the one that starts the conversation, in the sense that, you know, they can have one-on-one conversations with board members and even one-on-two conversations with board members about an issue, but they can't poll the board members to find out how they're going to vote on a particular item before bringing it for a, a public vote that's basically perfunctory at that point because the, the polling has already happened. So that would be a violation of both, for the superintendent and the board members. They're on the hook as well here, too. All right? So you, the board members can't direct staff to violate the open meeting law and I know you have a lot of great staff here, so you couldn't use staff in a way to communicate with other board members in, if it's designed to lead to a discussion or a deliberation or a decision outside of a board meeting. Really important, and I know this is a special meeting of the board, in governing boards, we tend to have all kinds of different meetings and we call them different things, whether it's a retreat or a special meeting or a, a working session or a study session. Just know that the law, the rules are the same no matter what you call your meeting. You still have to have an agenda, you still have to have, you know, stick to that agenda, you still have to follow all the rules that we're going to talk about as we get further on. Okay? And then remember that it's not just about something that comes, that's on a pending agenda, it's on something that could come on the, on the agenda. And then also, trying to avoid those situations where it, it, the appearance of a, of a violation is there, but even i- if it's not. And that is, you know, when you can't avoid it, for instance, when you leave a meeting, not to linger in the parking lot and have those long conversations that people are going to assume, where something is, you know, some violation is happening, there might not be, but, you know, you don't want to create that scrutiny if you can avoid it. That's, that's my suggestion. So there are some logistical things that you have to worry about when you deal with the open meeting law, and these are just sort of the mechanics of your, your meeting. One is the location of your meeting, the notice that the meeting is going to occur, and the agenda, what you're going to talk about, and then finally, the memorialization of that meeting, which are your minutes. And all of those have to be complied with under the open meeting law. So just a couple things on each one of these. One is your location. Your regular meetings can be any public facility in the district, but it has to be accessible to the public. It's a large facility, it's brightly lit, it's well, you know, amplified, and so this would be a, a great facility. Now, you may have a meeting, and as a board member, former board member myself, it's been a while, but I, I was a former board member, I had, was involved in a couple meetings that were just crazy packed with lots of people, and we actually moved meetings to the cafeteria or gymnasium or whatever. It wasn't the ideal situation. Jeff, was that one of those meetings? Was not the ideal situation, but at least we could say that everybody had an opportunity to attend that meeting and to see that meeting. So there's, there are opportunities to, to move to, to other locations if you know that you're going to have an overfilled crowd. So you can also have special meetings, there's no geographic restrictions, other than the fact that there's a legal prohibition on taking legal action when you're not in a public facility in the district. So there are districts, particularly in rural areas, where they may have a retreat that's off premises, and they will have it sort of like mostly done for strategic planning purposes. But they'll bring back whatever comes out of that in terms of recommendations for actual, official action at the district. And that's, that's okay to do it, but you, but you just can't take legal action if you're not in the district. I don't know if you do that, but, but there are districts that do that. It's still a public meeting, if people want to attend, they, they have to have the ability to attend. So your notice requirement, that tells, that's, there are two parts of that. One is that you, you state where you're going to post your notice when you're going to have a meeting. So in other words, you're telling your public, when we're going to have a meeting, this is where we're going to announce where we're going to have the meeting. That seems, in this day and age where everybody's checking websites, obviously that's your website, but it's also a physical location as well. Usually it's under glass, outside of the public, outside of the building, where anybody can drive up at any time and see what the agenda is. It has to be posted at least 24 hours in advance, and written notice has to be delivered to each board member as well in advance. And then the law also requires that you inform the public in a manner that's reasonable and practical. What that could mean is either notice in, in, in your individual school newsletters, it could be posts, post on, at the school sites themselves. What you don't want to do is require that to be official notice, because I can see how many logos you have up there, that if you required official notice at each one of your meetings and you missed even one of them, you'd have defective notice. So you want to keep your actual official notice very simple, but do other things in addition i- if you can. All right. So agenda and notice tend to go together, like, you know, PB and J kind of thing, but they are legally distinct. The notice says, we're going to have a meeting, the agenda says, here's what we're going to talk about when we do have that meeting. And what's really important about that is how accurate it is. They have to, you have to list specifically what you're going to talk about at that meeting, and it has to be addressed in a way that the public can understand. And that's really tricky sometimes for folks in education that are used to dealing with things that are, that have just become part of our regular language, that people outside of education don't necessarily understand. So we need, want to avoid things like acronyms and insider, sort of inside baseball kind of terms. And put, you've got to keep in mind that, you know, somebody who doesn't know anything about your district can look at that agenda and decide whether or not they want to attend, and to the extent you allow them to participate. So you're limited to those items that are on your agenda and, and the other things that are related to it. And that's, that's really a tricky thing, and that's why it's great that you have your own general counsel here, because you want to avoid trying to birdwalk from a, an agenda topic, where you may start on agenda topic A, which is perfectly stated and perfectly, you know, describing your agenda, but then you talk about something that's directly related to that agenda item, and then that leads to another topic that's, you know, kind of related to that one, but not quite as much as the actual stated agenda item. And that's where, you know, every board member is sort of on notice to, to, you know, kind of get the, the, you know, you have a new chair, so you want to get that, the attention of that person and say, you know, I think we're kind of getting far afield here from the stated agenda item. Because if you do go down the road of talking about something that's not on the agenda, even though you started from a place that was on the agenda, you have violated the open meeting law. So, and that's really important, especially when we get to executive sessions, because obviously people, maybe it might be, feel a little freer when they're, when they're outside of public view, but the rules are even more strict in terms of what you have to do and to adhere to your stated agenda item. So, and that's what we'll talk about executive sessions in a minute. And the last logistical thing I will mention is the, the minutes. So a written minutes or recording or minutes are required, including your executive sessions. And those minutes have to have these basic elements to them. They have to have the date, time and place on them, who, what members were present or absent, and a general description of all matters that were considered at that meeting. It also ought to include a, a description of every legal action proposed, including who made that motion, what the vote was, and again, each, how each person voted. That was something that was changed, I know probably in a, a district like, like Scottsdale, you probably have done roll call votes for a long time, but many districts have not, didn't do that. They used to do a voice vote, and the, the board secretary would record it as unanimous or, you know, with one dissenting vote. But this one requires you to actually break down what the vote is. So if you have people that come before your board and make statements before your board, whether they're staff members or whether they're members of the public, those names should be in the record as well in terms of your, the written minutes. Again, written minutes or recording. Now, I know that you record your meetings and may transcribe them into official minutes. At that, at that point, your official minutes become your, the written portion, but under public records law, you have to maintain that recording at least six months, and maybe perhaps more, depending on if there's any other legal requirement you're under. So any, any questions about any of that? That's, that's the kind of necessary but kind of boring stuff. There's no requirement for the public body to actually approve their minutes under the open meeting law. Under your policies, though, I imagine that you do do that, and that's a good practice. Your minutes have to be available to public inspection within three working days after your meeting. If they're not been approved, but most times you haven't had another board meeting to approve those minutes, that's okay, you can mark them draft if they're in written form, or you can have, make the recording available to the, the public if, if it's in that timeframe. And sometimes, if it's, if that, if it's something of, of high interest to the media, they're not going to wait three days. They're going to show up the next day and say, we heard something, you know, interesting happen at your meeting, we'd like to hear more about it, can we get that tape? What you can't do is say, well, sorry, we have, we know, we saw this training, we have three working days, we don't have to respond to that. If the, because you have another requirement under public records law that says you have to make prompt disclosure of public records, and if the recording is available, an audio recording that's readily available, you can't make them wait three days if it's, if it's easily to produce. So I would suggest, especially if it's a media request, work with a general counsel, but the typical thing is to try to get that to them as soon as they can. The next rule is that you consider, that there's some basic form of your meetings and there's some predictability about your meetings, that you, you follow the basic rules that are set forth in your policies, that you formally call your meeting to order, you cover all the items on the agenda, you can always table something if you don't want to get to it or you want to, you know, change it. One thing that I would use on your agenda, you probably have it at the beginning of your agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Most people sort of just go fast forward to that because they see it sort of perfunctory. I think that's a really good opportunity for you to adjust things if you need to. If you find out you have 30 people show up and they're going to talk about item six, and you didn't know it was going to be so, you know, raise such concern, that, the approval of the agenda item allows you to adjust your agenda to put that item maybe earlier on the agenda, to deal with it first, and you just amend the agenda to move item six to number two. You formally, I, I ask speakers to identify themselves and then you formally adjourn your meeting. So those are the kind of, just the basic things about the order of your meeting and how to conduct it. And then you get to the citizen's participation policy, and then when I talk about open meeting law for, for outside groups, they're usually surprised to hear that the open meeting law does not require you to have a call to the public, doesn't require to get, to require, to get any public participation of any kind. But almost every district in the state, I think, has some public participation, but because it's not required, it allows you to sort of adopt reasonable time, place and manner restrictions to have a system that works best for you. But under the open meeting law, the public has these certain rights. They have the right to attend and to listen, they can record you by video or audio, and they can expect you to follow your own rules. They have the right to address the public body if your policy provides for that. And then under the rules that you, you set, as long as they're fairly applied to everyone. But here's the big thing, and that is, this is the frustrating thing for, for the public that shows up and may be en masse to talk about a particular topic, but it's not on your agenda that night, is that they need to be informed at that time, is that yes, under your rules for an open call to the public, you could, they can speak to their, you know, three minutes about that item, but you cannot address them and you cannot take action on something that's not on the agenda. Because there may be other folks that wanted to have that conversation as well, and they weren't on notice that you were going to have that conversation. You can limit comments appearing to, items appearing on the agenda if you wanted to, if you wanted to have what we call a limited call to the public. But again, if you, if it's an open call to the public, somebody raises something that's not on the agenda, you have two things that you can do. You can ask the staff to review the matter or place the matter on a future agenda. There's also a provision, if, if it's, there's criticism that's of a personal nature or of the district that you feel is unfair, or if you believe that facts have come out or have been asserted that are not true, at the end of the call to the public, you can ask for a response to criticism, to directly respond to that criticism. Without getting into a debate, what I would suggest, here's an example of how I would use that, is if somebody, you know, declared, you know, this board member has a conflict of interest, and it's a conflict of interest under the law, and, you know, you shouldn't be dealing with this. Well, you've gotten advice from your general counsel, as a matter of fact, about that, and it's not a conflict of interest under the law. And in your response to criticism, you could say, well, we did look into that matter, and yes, and no, we do not have a conflict of interest because the law requires this. That would be an appropriate use of, I think, that response to criticism. What you don't want to do is you use that to amplify the issue beyond what it really is. One of the things that come with these positions, these high-paid board member positions, that's a joke for anybody who doesn't know that board members are not paid, is that, you know, you, you do have to take criticism sometimes, and sometimes that criticism's unfair, and sometimes you have to just, that's part of the job, and I think you all know that. So you can, if you do create a, an opportunity for the public to participate in your meetings, just know that you, the First Amendment then applies because you essentially have created a designated public forum, which means that you can't rule somebody's comment out of order just because you don't like it. Now, if they don't, if they, if they are violating some other rule, like they're going beyond their time, they're using profanity, other aspects like that, you can certainly gavel them out of order. But what you can't say is, well, we're just not going to hear anything negative about that. The problem with that is you hear positive things all day, and so in effect, you're, you're engaging in a viewpoint discrimination against negative things. So that's part of the, the, again, part of being a board member is, is listening to the good things and the bad things. Okay, any questions about all that before I go to the next one? Because this next one sometimes takes a little time. All right, we're good, we're good, okay. And I know you have other things to talk about, so I don't want to go on forever, but the next thing I want to mention, it kind of is a point of emphasis for us, is that the use of a board and superintendent reports. There's a provision in the open meeting law that allows the chief executive officer of a public body, superintendent in this case, or any board member, to give a summary of current events without those items actually appearing on the agenda. But it's, it's subject to certain rules, which are that one is, it's, cannot be up for discussion amongst the board if it's not on the agenda. There can't be any decisions made about that issue. It should be, and it has to be on the agenda that a summary will be given. The intent was, when this was created, was to allow for an opportunity for board members to, to kind of talk about some of the things that they, they would have been doing, or to give recognitions of staff and students that are not normally going to be up for debate or discussion. You, you have a teacher of the year candidate that made the final list, and you want to, you want to give a shout out to them, and you want to give them proper recognition. That would be a good use of that. You want to recognize the sports team that did well, you want, that's a good use of that. On an individual board member basis, if you want to say, I participated in a Scottsdale leadership opportunity, and it's enhancing my board service, that would be a, a good use of it. What you don't want it to be is sort of an editorial opportunity to go into issues that are not really intended for that, and that you know people would want to have a discussion about or potentially take action about. Now, if something does come up, it's sort of like an open call to the public, if something does come up during one of these reports, what you can do is, again, say, that's a great idea, or that's an interesting topic, why don't we put that on the next agenda and we can talk about that? Because I think others would like to weigh in on it. From a superintendent or staff perspective, these reports are really important because to understand that there, there are all kinds of reports that you get, you know it, I mean, I saw your staffing report and, and the things that you have attached to your agenda, know that this kind of report is different than other kinds of reports. Other kinds of reports, like a transportation report, or a staffing report, or, or a budget report, those have to follow the, everything that the open meeting law requires. They have to have specificity, they have to describe in a, in a sufficient detail that anyone would understand as to what you're going to do. These kind of reports are different, and they come under different rules. And sometimes there's a confusion about, you know, a current event summary report versus other reports that you do. And just know that they're different things and different rules apply. And I think I talked about all that. So, executive sessions. Executive sessions are meetings of the board, quorum of board members, for which the public body has been excluded. And they're excluded because the legislature has decided as a matter of public policy that somehow the public interest is being furthered by the public not being there, which would seem to be, you know, a, a kind of a strange conclusion. But there are things that, where I think the public interest is furthered by the public not being here, and, and if you see the reasons, you'll understand. But first of all, before you can have an executive session, the procedural elements that have to take place are really important. Before you have an executive session, you've got to, one, it's got to be on the agenda that you are going to go into executive session with a specific statutory basis for doing so. It also should include a description without defeating the purpose of why you're doing it in the first place. But you, you have to have, if you called a meeting to order, you make a, a motion to go into executive session, everybody has to agree by, by a majority to do that. And then, again, you, you then proceed into executive session. When you're in the executive session, only those individuals that are necessary to have a function in that executive session ought to be there. That's the board, and it's usually your superintendent, if not always your superintendent, and it may be others if they have a role there. But if, but normally, what, what, what you don't want to have is the same group of people every time in every executive session. Because you, and, and I know folks over here are like, well, good, we don't want to be there anyway. Because in, in, this was a problem in, in cities where, where basically everybody would be there, and the question is, you know, why are, why are these, how could these confidential, if these folks don't have an individual role to play in, in that executive session? So make sure that only those people that have to be there are there. Make sure that participants are reminded each and every time that what happens in executive session has to stay there, that it's confidential and can never be discussed with anyone. And then you can't take a straw poll or preliminary vote in an executive session prior to deciding the matter in open session. No votes are taken in an executive session. We're going to get to areas where you can give direction on, but that's sort of a term of art where you, you give direction, but you don't vote on it. I know. It seems kind of strange, but you can't take a vote in an executive session. In fact, to show you how, how, how much, how important the attorney general's office takes this, they believe that you can't even motion to go out of executive session in executive session, because that's a legal action. In other words, an executive session is, it begins with a motion to go into executive session, and an, an executive session ends with a motion to reconvene open session. That's how seriously they take that, no legal action. So, but there is a, a couple areas where you can instruct, instruct a third party with, again, without a vote, and these are a few areas. One is litigation or settlement discussions, if you're involved in those things, where you're sort of defining the parameters of where settlement discussions could happen. Negotiations, if you're involved in a meet and for process, or if you're going to be selling or purchasing or leasing your real property. And in each one of those, you can see why you could do that, because you would be protecting the public interest of the price of the real estate, you'd protect, protecting the public interest in terms of what your negotiating stance will be with regard to litigation and, and the like. Then you continue with the remainder of your meeting after the executive session is over. So here are your seven reasons for doing an executive session, there's actually eight, but the seven in the open meeting law is you're to deal with personnel matters, to get legal advice from your attorney, so your attorney's got to be there and it's got to be limited to the legal advice. If you're due to be discussing records that are exempt under public inspection, under, under the law for public inspection, basically, a lot of times it's either personnel records that are protected or student records. Contract negotiations or, or pending litigation, or negotiating, giving instruction to your negotiating representative. If you're involved in any international interstate negotiations, doesn't happen too often, but especially if you have tribal lands in the area, and I know you do, you may have different jurisdictions involved, and that can happen in an executive session, because their rules may be different than yours. And then also the purchase sale or lease of real property, which we talked about. So just a couple of things on these is that, to keep in mind, which is, if you're going to go, use the personnel exception, which is by far, in my experience, the most common exception that we use for executive sessions in, for school districts, that you use it to discuss an, an actual employee, an identified person, not a position. In other words, maybe during the Great Recession, you had to look at cuts, and the cuts were systemic. In other words, you know, we, we can't afford a second assistant principal in a school that has over 500 students, so we need to eliminate those positions. That could not have, be a discussion in the executive session, because that is a, an organizational discussion, and you're not talking about an individual person's performance. Whereas if you had an issue with a particular assistant principal, and there was a report, that could be done in an executive session, because you're actually talking about a person. Okay? If you are talking about a person, you need to make sure that that person gets delivery of a notice that they're going to be talking in an executive session 24 hours in advance. That individual can decide, no, you know, I'd rather have that discussion in public where I can be there and where the people that support me can be there. That's their right. And then the employee does not normally have the right to attend an executive session, unless it's a due process hearing, but again, they have that right to have it in public. But they also, they do have the right to review the minutes of the executive session for which they were discussed. Here's a big thing that I would, I would focus on, on employee matters, is that, say you are going to go into executive session, you're going to be talking about employees, you have one employee in mind, but other employees may come up in that discussion. You want to make sure that you notice each one of those employees, because if somebody else's name comes up and they were not noticed, you've got a problem. So, or you want to use sort of, you know, something to mask their identity if they're not the subject of the conversation. And superintendent evaluations. Superintendent evaluations can take place in an executive session, perfectly legitimate, a lot of districts do it. What you want to make sure, though, is it's, it's centered on the superintendent's performance, and it's not as a guise of a full-blown evaluation of how the district is doing, for instance, in success of its strategic plan, which are typically discussions that the public wants to hear and wants to be involved in. So it ought to be focused on individual performance, and we actually had an enforcement action not that long ago about this very issue. And I know that superintendent is in charge of, you know, generally, you know, you hold, that's the one person you evaluate. that's the one person you evaluate, because you don't evaluate all the others, that's somebody else's job. So there is a tendency to want to, to broaden it, to talk about, you know, big topics. You just want to make sure that it's specific to this individual's performance and not other discussions that you know have public value that ought to be done in public. Okay? If you're going to be getting legal advice, make sure your attorney's there and make sure that once that legal advice is given, that you're out. Okay? Because you can't start with legal advice, get that legal advice and then chew on the issue for a while if you're not noticed for, you know, for some other reason to be there. If you're going to get, give some direction to your negotiating representative on meet and confer, there might be some background that needs to be given before you give that direction, like in terms of, say you're going to be talking about salary offerings for the next year and you may need to know what the budget looks like. Well, that, make sure that's a very confined discussion and not a broad discussion about the budget, because that again is, has public value and ought to be done in public. And, and make sure that it's not a discussion of, well, I know that we're only offering them 2%, but if we eliminated this program that I don't think is worthy of doing anything, we could offer more. Again, you're not noticed for that. Okay? Excuse me. Minutes, you do have to have executive session minutes, the date, time and location, who's there, a general description of everything that was considered and then, but unlike your regular minutes, these are kept confidential and the review of them is, is limited to public body members or the, the, the employee if they were subject to this conversation. They also are kept at the district office and not widely distributed. So they should be, they, you know, an individual who, who has entitled to see them ought to go to the district office to see them, have a room, have them allowed to take, take a look, but they shouldn't be distributed in terms of digital copies and things like that because you need to maintain confidentiality of these things. I mentioned that there was, there was an eighth reason to have an executive session and it's not under the open meeting law because other public bodies don't do this. But we have student hearings, we have disciplinary hearings. And they're done under Title 15, but they're done in an executive session. So, and, and the, the rules are similar, but a little bit different, which is that the rights really are, if you have your hearing and decision in an executive session, now my guess is like you're sending all your disciplinary matters to hearing officers, right? And so you're just dealing with the recommendations. But say there's an appeal and if there is an appeal, then the parent has a right to be there. And they can also, just like when the employee situation, they can decide, we'd rather have that discussion in public. You would have to allow them to do that. If it's a, if it's, the teacher is involved, like if it's a, an issue of retention, the teacher has to be, has the right to be in the executive session as well, if they choose to be there. I think I talked about all that, basically the same rules there. Finally, emergency sessions. So what happens if you find out, hey, we took action on that item, but I don't think we followed all the hoops and I'm not sure we sufficiently described the item? Are we just stuck with the result? Because one of the provisions of, is if you have defective notice on either a, a particular item or on a full meeting, the legal effect is, is to nullify that action. But you don't have to live with that forever. If you find out that the, the opening law was violated, you can post a, an emergency item, you can ratify it, and as long as it's done 30 days, within 30 days after you found out that it was, but, open meeting law was violated, you can do that. And I just jumped to another slide because that's that one. Let me, let me go back to emergency sessions. Emergency sessions are sessions where you can't comply with a 24-hour notice requirement. You have to, you know, meet and, because something happened. We've had instances where, you know, obviously it's a roof collapse and you have to approve emergency funding or something drastic. As long as it's a bona fide emergency, you can do that, just you need to stay, state at the agenda, on the, at the meeting, why you couldn't comply. And what I was talking about before and I conflated the two is that the actual ratification process, if you know that you violated the open meeting law, but you can fix it. And this is the way to fix it. Okay, so the next thing I just want to mention is the penalties, which are, they've kind of gotten ramped up over the last couple of years. Basically, most, most open meeting law violations flow through the Attorney General's Office. There's a task force, I don't know if you call them a task force, but there's a group within the Attorney General's Office called Omelet. And they, they look at all the open meeting law challenges. And what they tend to do though is that if they believe that there's an innocent violation of the open meeting law, they tend to require board members to get training and to, to essentially agree not to do it again. We have had serious violations where there was intent and there was proof of intent, where board members have had to be removed and resign their positions, but those are few and far between. I think if there's, if there's a real serious intent to comply, they, they tend to, to look upon, favorably upon that. So the first offense for a violation of the open meeting law violation is $500 fine per violation, and that's in addition to attorney's fees and costs, which could be more extensive. But that's for a knowing violation of the law. And a second fine for a knowing violation is $2,500. Interesting, for board members, again, volunteer positions, these are not fines that can be paid for by the district, nor can they be paid for by your insurance carrier. So it does come out of your pocket. There is a provision that was added to the law just last year that I think is, is interesting, which is that basically if there's, you know that the open meeting law is being violated and you, and there's a record that you thought the law was being violated and you objected to it and you noted it on, on the public record, that the law will look favorably upon you for that. One option obviously is to choose not to be part of that meeting, but if you, if it's a matter of record that you raised the issue and were essentially overruled, they will take that into consideration when looking at violations. So, any other questions? You guys were, I usually get a ton more questions when I go through this. Yes?
If you have, if you believe that an open meeting law violation occurred, either during a meeting or not, and what is the appropriate step? Should the district self-report itself or if they refuse to, do you submit it to the Attorney General's Office?
Well, I hate to give you a lawyer's answer, but it obviously depends on the circumstances and the nature of the violation that you believe may have happened. I would work with your general counsel on that and ask those questions. Oftentimes, I mean, if, if it's, it's serious enough, self-reporting can be a good thing for you, you know, if, if that's the case. Or it could be something that's just a matter of, of self-correction. Again, it depends on the egregious nature of whether, you know, it is an egregious violation.
And what about if you're in a meeting like this one and we're texting each other?
Yeah.
What, what's the, what is the situation there?
Yeah, okay, great question, because, and we covered this at, at our law conference and really dove deep into this, because the idea is that the public should be able to come to your meetings and see what's happening. And, and that includes board members, you know, making their points, board members, you know, maybe disagreeing about things, but regardless, they're seeing it. But if, if there's text messages in going about substance of the conversations, then, then that could be a violation of the open meeting law. However, if there are text messages of, you know, hey, I could use a bathroom break or, you know, things like that, that's not a violation of the open meeting law because again, remember the two, two things that we required? One is a quorum and the second is the nature of the conversation. Now that doesn't, and again, it's also a public records issue, because if it's on, if it's about public business, regardless of whether it's on your private computer or a public computer, it's a public record. That could be disclosed, but again, if, if it's of the nature of, hey, I need a bathroom break, that's not public business, it wouldn't be disclosed. So it, it, so it all depends on the nature of the communication itself, who's involved and, but if it's substantive about the debate, absolutely it ought to not happen during a board meeting.
Do all districts have to do an annual open meeting law review?
Not required under the law.
Not required under the law, so we do this voluntarily?
The, the Scottsdale District does that based on a consent decree from the 1990s when there was an issue with executive session in, in particular. It was a consent decree that is unusual in that it doesn't have an end date and we...
I wouldn't say unusual given this discussion.
When I, when I came here quite some time ago, I figured, why would we ask to stop doing that? Let's just continue to do it every year, so.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion or questions?
So the executive session minutes can be recorded minutes, right? That's what we typically have, not just actual physical.
And if I recall, you, you record all your executive sessions.
Correct.
Attorney General's Office loves that.
When you talk about our video recordings here or tape recordings, are, are those things that can be edited?
I, I, I mean, you can't remove things that I think substantively happened at the meeting. I think I would, I think would depend on the circumstance, I'm not sure where you come from, but, I mean, if, if that's your official record of what happened at the meeting, then I would say it shouldn't be edited. If you also have written minutes that are the official record of what happened at the meeting, you know, and that's, and that's your documentation, then, but even then you have public records issues. It depends on if you're editing, editing it for brevity or for what the nature of the editing is, I suppose, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
You're welcome, I hope I kept you all away from the rest of the meeting.
Well, I do have one question. Is, is that public information that we could actually receive, your 12 rules, so that we can put it in our binders and if we ever needed to go back to it?
And we've got, we've got, I also, we, we also put out an open meeting law handbook and happy to get you those copies as well.
I also have them.
You bet.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to information discussion, item 5B, the review of the Hanover Research Climate Survey. And I believe we also have a separate presenter, but I'm not aware of that, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Creaker.
Thank you, President Beckham and members of the board. So as, as you know and for the public's information, this is the second year in a row that we have used the Hanover Research firm to create a, a survey, deploy that survey and compile the, the data and the analysis of that data regarding the climate of the district. And in, and in this case, because we are using a well-known firm that does this across the country, they have a format that we've found to be very useful because it, it deals with, with such topics as the educational environment of school, the physical environment of schools, it deals, deals with the amount of engagement that parents and community members have with the school, relationships between and among staff members as well as students and certainly between staff members and students, it's a wide range of things. So hopefully on the line, we have Mr. Garrett Brand, who is the Content Director for K-12 Education for Hanover Research. And he led both the last two years' climate survey and he will be, is he going to manipulate the, he's going to manipulate the PowerPoint as well as speak to us from Arlington, Virginia? So Garrett, are you on, on the phone?
I am, can you all hear me all right?
Yes. Yes.
Excellent. Should I take it away, Dr. Creaker?
Yep, you're up, thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to present the results from this year's climate survey. As Dr. Creaker noted, we, Hanover Research partners with the district again this year to administer and analyze the survey of school climate. This is the same survey that we administered last year based on school climate literature and trends in the hundreds of climate survey instruments that we've designed for our K-12 climate over the years. As you may recall and as Dr. Creaker just noted, the survey questions are primarily associated with a series of four main constructs of school climate, which are school and building environments, academic environments, social environments, and stakeholders including them. And then within these four main constructs are evidence-based sub-constructs designed to gather additional nuanced data to help districts and schools understand their climate. And let me just switch gears slightly, that would be my document. So we can see here, for this year, we had over 14,000 stakeholders respond to the survey, including 10,961 students in grades four through 12, 1,756 parents, 1,404 staff members and 115 community members. So this response was below last year's response of over 17,000 total respondents, but still represented a strong response rate for the district. So the key findings on these, the following slides that we'll go through focus both on this year's results as well as the trends and results across the past two, three years. Before I dive into those, does anyone have any questions in terms of the, the survey administration or the focus this year?
Does anybody have any questions? Uh, no, they do not, Mr. Brand.
So starting with some general key findings around school and instructional climate, we found that more than 80% of staff members and parents again agree this year that the district creates a positive emotional climate, while students express less positive feedback. For example, 86% of staff members, 81% of parents and 58% of students agree that students at their or their child's school are proud to attend school. The biggest gap appears with respect to whether students like school, with only 40% of students agreeing that their peers like school, down from 43% in the, in the previous year in comparison to over 80% of parents and staff members. Stakeholders continue to agree that the district provides safe environments overall. However, a minority of respondents, particularly students, do indicate that the school can have issues with violence and theft. For example, over a quarter of students again disagree that their school does not have issues with violence and theft, up to 16% of staff members and 14% of parents. And I'm going to continue to go through the key findings, but please stop me if there's any questions along the way or if you'd like to pause when I hit the figures. So two more findings around school and instructional climate. Respondents expressed slightly more positive perceptions this year of classroom environment and slightly less positive perceptions of the cleanliness of common spaces in comparison to respondents in 2018-19, while three-quarters of students, staff members and parents agree that schools have classroom environments that support student learning, up from 73% in the year prior. The percentage of stakeholders agreeing that schools have clean bathrooms and common spaces fell by approximately three percentage points to 32 and 64% respectively. Students particularly continue to express less positive opinions than other stakeholders regarding school bathrooms, which is trendably see across similar surveys at other districts as well. The majority of respondents again agree that their or their child's school has a positive instructional climate. A various aspects of instructional climate, respondents most agree that their school wants students to succeed, 84%. Respondents are more likely to agree this year that schools provide enough technology and material resources to support student learning and as well as equipally challenge advanced students. With respect to teachers, respondents most agree that district teachers expect students to do their best and least agree that students, that teachers connect class to life outside So approximately two-thirds and more of respondents continue to indicate that adults at school respect and care about students and enforce rules fairly and consistently. Gaps in perception between students and parents and staff members also persist, with students expressing less positive perceptions of adults at their school. For example, 71% of students, 87% of parents... students, 87% of parents, and 97% of staff members agree that adults at school care about students. Similarly, students are again less likely than parents, who are in turn less likely than staff members, to agree that their peers respect other students, help each other learn, care about each other, and follow school rules. In terms of behavior and discipline, approximately three-quarters or more of respondents again indicate that staff and students are never verbally harassed or physically threatened by staff nor physically threatened by students. However, 39%, down from 42% in the year prior, of students in grade seven and above, parents and school staff indicate that they or their children have been verbally harassed by students, of which 10% indicate that this has happened more than five times. Students are significantly more likely to verbally harass or physically threaten other students as opposed to staff members. In terms of bullying and harassment, students and staff members indicate that students have been more frequently harassed or bullied this school year. So, overall, respondents are less likely to agree that bullying and harassment incidents, based on the following characteristics, occur almost never or only a few times a year: sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and physical appearance. The only factor that respondents indicate is less likely to be the focus of an incident of harassment or bullying is political belief. Even so, the majority of respondents indicate that students are almost never bullied or harassed based on religion, disabilities, or race ethnicity or skin color. Approximately one in 10 students, however, still report almost daily occurrences of bullying or harassment based on religion, disabilities, and race ethnicity or skin color. Staff continue to perceive that students are bullied or harassed less frequently in comparison to students. For example, nearly three-quarters of staff members believe that students are harassed or bullied only a few times a year or never, based on physical appearance, in contrast, with only 46% of students. In addition, you know, the all-staff respondents indicate that their peers almost never experience bullying and harassment. Staff respondents report that staff members at their school or building are most likely to be harassed or bullied based on political belief or physical appearance, with 11% of staff respondents indicating that their peers are bullied based on their political beliefs and 7% based on their physical appearance a few times a year. In terms of student engagement and support, stakeholders continue to identify gaps in resources and supports for specific student subjects. While over 70% of students, parents, staff members, and community members overall agree that schools provide sufficient resources and support for students qualifying for special education services, high-achieving students, and English language learners, less than two-thirds of stakeholders continue to agree similarly for underperforming students and student mental health and bullying more generally. Notably, students respond similarly across years, typically as or more positively than other stakeholders, while staff members, parents, and community members express more positive feedback this year. Once again, more than 80% of respondents agree that their or their child's school offers sufficient and quality extracurricular, for example, sports and clubs, and co-curricular activities, for example, drum and band. Staff continue to have more positive perceptions in these areas than students and parents. Only approximately half or less of students continue to agree that students at their school have positive attitudes towards learning. The results mirror those from the 2018-19 school year, with approximately half of students agreeing that students at their school work hard and come to class prepared. Thirty percent of students agree that their peers are motivated to learn, get excited to learn new things, and enjoy learning. Conversely, between 71 and 81% of staff members continue to respond positively to these items, again highlighting the gap between student and teacher perception in these areas. In terms of student outcomes, overall, approximately 60 to 70% of stakeholders continue to agree that the district develops students' abilities to collaborate with others, critical thinking skills, and listening skills. Once again, stakeholders are least likely to agree that the district develops students' ability to manage emotions, resolve conflict, and ability to empathize with others. Students consistently express less positive perceptions of related student outcomes than parents, who express less positive perceptions than staff members. Continuing with findings around student outcomes, most respondents continue to believe that the districts, that district schools prepare students for college and slightly less so for a career. Overall, respondents this year are two percentage points more likely to agree that the district schools prepare students with computer and technology skills, a three percentage points less likely to agree that the district school prepares students to take responsibility for their actions. Respondents continue to least agree that the district prepares students engaged with the global community. In terms of staff member relationships and community engagement, staff members continue to express clearly unanimous positive opinions about their relationships at their school and building. Almost all staff members again agree that they have positive relationships with students, 98%, and with other staff members, 96%, at their school, and that their colleagues care about them. Respondents this year were between two and three percentage points more likely to agree that their supervisor or manager cares about them and that their colleagues and supervisor or manager supports their professional development. Relatingly, staff members indicate that school-provided professional development opportunities and resources have increased and/or improved. The staff respondents are between three and seven percentage points more likely this year to agree that their school or building provides enough professional development opportunities, opportunities for peer collaboration and support, enough technology resources, enough material resources, and quality professional development opportunities. In terms of community engagement, perception of the district's engagement of communication with community members and parents improved significantly between the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school years. So, overall, staff members and community members are more than 25 percentage points more likely to agree that the district engages the community and effectively communicates with community members, 67% versus 39%. Similarly, parents are more than 10 percentage points more likely to agree that the district engages and effectively communicates with parents. So, this is one of the, the larger shifts from the last year. Continuing, parent perceptions of staff members at their child's school are consistent with last year's feedback. Approximately two-thirds or more of parents across the year agree that staff members communicate with, provide, or welcome, and generally engage parents. However, less than two-thirds of parents continue to agree that staff members are transparent about school decision-making. Regarding perceptions of leadership, staff members and parents continue to express positive opinions about school leadership. More than two-thirds of staff members and parents agree that school administrators make decisions that support student learning and are in tune with, with parents, students, teachers, and non-teaching staff members concerned. Overall, responses were one to five percentage points more positive this year in comparison to the year prior. Similarly, a large majority of staff continue to agree that administrators at their school support their success and treat teachers as fairly respected. Staff members and parents express significantly more positive views regarding district leaders than in the prior year, although room for improvement remains. Overall, staff members and parents were between 16 and 26 percentage points more likely to agree that district leaders make decisions that support student learning, communicate a strong vision for the district, are in tune with school-level issues or concerns, and manage the district budget responsibly. In addition, nearly half or more of stakeholders agree that the district attracts and retains high-quality teachers and staff members from diverse backgrounds at consistent improvement from last year. For example, 63% of staff members, parents, and community members agree that the district attracts high-quality teachers in comparison to 49% in the year prior. Similar to the year prior, stakeholders are more likely to agree that the district attracts and retains high-quality teachers than attracts and retains staff members from diverse backgrounds. In terms of the district direction, approximately two-thirds of stakeholders agree that Scottsdale is headed in the right direction, up from half of stakeholders last year. Overall, when asked whether the district is moving in the right direction, 43% of community members, 61% of parents, and 70% of staff members agree or strongly agree with, with parents and staff members approximately 15 percentage points more likely to agree this year. So, the improvements among stakeholder perceptions of the district's direction, as well as district leaders, were among the largest in the survey and certainly underscore the general positive findings coming out of this year's survey, as it stands by itself, as well as in comparison to the results from the year prior. This all leads into our first of a few recommendations that we have for the district. The first being that the district maintained the district's current course. The perceptions regarding the district's overall direction, district and school leadership, and parenting community engagement all improved significantly over the past year, although, of course, room for improvement remains. In terms of our, our other recommendations, we recommend the district prioritize support for underachieving students and students with mental health challenges specifically, as stakeholders are less likely to agree that the district adequately supports underachieving students and students' mental health generally in comparison with supporting high-achieving students and students eligible for special education services. We also recommend the district investigate students' perceptions regarding incidents of violence and theft. While stakeholders continue to agree that the district provides safe environments for students overall, a quarter of students, again this year, expressed concerns regarding violence and theft at their school. We also recommend the district emphasize developing students' social emotional skills, as only approximately half or less of respondents agree that the district currently develops students' abilities to empathize, resolve conflicts, and manage emotions. And finally, this is similar to last year's, one of last year's recommendations, but we recommend the district continue to support school leaders and staff to prevent and address bullying and harassment. This year's results suggest that students have been more frequently harassed or bullied this school year in comparison to last, particularly related to physical appearance, sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation. So, that concludes what we have prepared this evening. I'm happy to take any questions you may all have or discuss anything else that has come up as I went through that.
Jan Michael?
All right. So, my understanding is that there is a breakdown of these results on a school-by-school basis, correct?
That, and that went out to the schools on the Friday before break, to the principals.
To the principals.
To the principals.
But the administration, the administration also has copies of those, correct?
The district administration?
You and your staff.
Right, right.
Okay.
And we will send you that, we'll send you the full report by email tomorrow.
And how, how will the, how do you believe the administration will use the overall, but mainly the school-by-school breakdowns to assess concerns at school sites?
Well, one of the first things we want to do is have each individual school assess their own situation. Look at their results, see where the disparity is between adults and students. And, because there will be some differences from school to school on all of those different, different measures, and we want them to assess that. So, that's, that's first, is the assessment. We have, we have trainings going on and being ready. We have training for schools in what's called school-wide information system, which is mostly behavioral issues. And we are, are training administrators and staff on, on those areas. All of the schools are either involved currently in PBIS or will be enhancing their program in PBIS. And so, we have training for all of the schools to take place later this month. But I want to emphasize again, we don't want to just train in a vacuum. We, we want people to have a relevance of the training they're receiving to their school situation. We want that context so that they can then begin to plan. So, so we assess, then we plan, then we implement, then we assess again. And it's really circular. And that, that planning is important if it is tied to the assessment of what the needs are at that school. We, we continue to have training for our counselors and psychologists and social workers in student assistance programs and so forth. And then, then of course, so those are three efforts that, that are ongoing in this district that are really, were ramping up, really because of the results of the survey last year when we saw that disparity. And, and to see that, that it is, it is still there is not surprising because it was significant last year and you're not going to change that overnight. But the planning to take place is, is so important to that. And then, of course, we have, we have an annual event, you know, that, this is the 10th annual event of the Mental Health and School Networking Event, which is really a, has valley-wide attendance, grown to be a valley-wide that we, that we host. But I think in answer to your question, how do, how do we use this? There was some, maybe lack of follow-through at some schools, didn't take it as seriously, didn't realize that, that, that this is something that we're looking at, at very seriously. So, the email that, the directions that went out to the principals was, we are giving you this before the break. We want you to take a look at it over the break, decide. And then, the first principals breakout meetings coming up, we'll have discussion of these items and what they are doing and where the training is. We, we know that it's a national crisis, social emotional learning. We see it in all of, all of our literature that cross our desks. We've talked about it here quite a bit. So, we've started to ramp up some of these efforts with, with more data now. We also have talks going on with Charos for funding for social emotion. And we have a plan. In fact, Shannon Cron is meeting later this week with the Charos Education Committee, answering their specific questions to do that. We also have ongoing discussions with Arizona State University. They're the Watt College of Social Work. We're developing a relationship where we will be having this semester, we will be having master's social work students doing their practicum in our district, so adding to that group of people who will be in the schools, working with our people. So, it's really, it's really a pretty extensive overall picture of, of what we are doing with the schools, while at this, while at the main, at the same time, our main function is the education and the instruction that goes on daily. So...
I appreciate that very thorough explanation. The only reason I ask is there are, there are a lot of data points that can be used for the analysis of how, the health of a campus site. And I know that last year, right after we handed out contracts and got them back, we found an issue at the campus site. And I do, maybe we did receive them last year, the specific school breakdowns. I don't know if we did. I don't think we did.
I don't think, I don't think.
But, you know, I don't know if that was reflected in that and that nobody answered because they were all so angry or that they answered and were. So, my point is that I, you know, I just want to make sure that we are losing, we are using all data that we are- are paying for to get in a smart way and dynamic way, and it, it seems like we are, so I appreciate that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
But we, we learned through that experience last year as well.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Vice President Beckman.
So are we going to be using this template annually as far as the same questions to, to measure progress? Do we have any idea? I imagine we'd be doing the survey.
I, I can't commit.
Right.
You or my successor to that, but I would certainly recommend that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, it's very valuable to see the comparison of the, of the two years.
Correct, that's where I was going, especially when we have a school, an individual school breakout, if we use the same type of survey annually, and then the schools get the feedback or the information contained in them, and they come up with some sort of, you know, process, et cetera, ideas to, to improve in the areas where they need to improve, then there can be that annual comparative analysis on whether what they did actually worked.
Right.
And so I would truly submit to the board that, you know, we continue.
Right. And the other thing that we've done, we've asked Mr. Brand and people at Hanover if they could give us national trend data, find out if, if our students are responding in a way that is very different from students across the country, or is this a national trend? And I think, Garrett, if you're still, didn't you say you thought later this spring you'll have some of that data available? I think that's what he said.
Mr. Brand, are you still on the telephone?
Yes, I'm here, and, yes, Dr. Krieger, you mentioned the, the benchmarking of the climate survey results?
Yes. And, and so you, you said?
Yeah, so our plan is perhaps, we administer the, the standard climate instrument across a variety of districts that we work with across the country, and we're currently working on compiling those results into a platform that would allow districts that we work with and administer the survey to compare their results against, ideally similar districts in terms of size or demographics, to see where, where their students stand and look at trends as well.
Board member.
Could we just go back to the slide where I think it talked about the respect and fairly enforced rules? I just wanted to look at those numbers again since I haven't seen them before.
Mr. Brand, can you hear?
Yes, let me go back to that slide now.
And then, okay, so this.
Was it the slide you were thinking of?
That was this slide. So students in 2019, okay, so this year's, it looks like.
All right, those are all this, this year's respondents, and it's, it's the parent group, the staff, and then, and then the students.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, we're not looking, we're not comparing for another year, it looks like the student respondents were, the students felt, or the parents and the staff had greater positive response than the students?
Right.
I think this is, for me, this is a rather interesting slide, with respect to students' fairly enforced school rules, that I would want to dig deeper into and see where, which schools specifically there is the difference in response. I'd also like to look at the slide for Prepare Students for College and Career.
Okay.
And again, school, let's see, and this is an aggregate, this isn't broken down by stu, by student-staff, is that correct?
This is, this is the aggregate.
That's correct, this is for the entire group.
Neither agree, disagree. Okay. So we've got disagree, strongly disagree, neither disagree, so.
So I think I, we should have a segmented figure here as well.
For college.
We have it broken out by stakeholder groups.
Oh, okay. Students. Again, students seem to be lower than the other groups, except for maybe global community at the bottom. Was there another slide where, I thought I had written down where students taking their education, is it on this one, take, take education seriously?
Learning seriously.
Yeah, taking learning seriously, I'd like to look at that one as well.
See, all of these slides really, all these slides show really that, if people think it's easy working with schools, look at how negative those kids are.
That, that's why I find it interesting that the students seem, that last, yeah, there were this slide that shows the taking education seriously.
So, and last year, we took last year's survey to the superintendent's advisory board, and they validated, now that's, that's qualitative, not, not quantitative data, but, but those students who are well-spoken and, and very involved in their schools, validated these things. They said, yeah, I think most people would view, would view it that way, even if they themselves didn't agree, they know what their peers are thinking and saying about school, about what goes, what goes on campus, so we'll do that again.
I think you have feedback for the students on the superintendent advisory committee would be very helpful as well.
Any other questions or discussion? I, Dr., or Mr. Brand, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned comparison graphs. Do you provide the district with a comparison graph of last year versus this year in a bar graph?
Yeah.
But, I mean, as a, as a whole.
So in, so in the, in the full report, we have the, the results from just the 2018, or the 2019-'20 school year, in cases where the, the results were overall were within one percentage point of the results from last year, so essentially no change. In all cases where, for a specific certain survey item, there was a change of two percentage points or more, we include the, the longitudinal comparison for the, the top two items in the, the scale. So I can show an example, here we have for around positive emotional climate indicators, the first three items at the top are all year-over-year, similar within one percentage point, and then the only item in this question matrix that was different by more than, by two percentage points or more was regarding whether students at my school or my child's school liked school.
Okay, all right, great. And you, one of the questions I also had, and it was brought up by Dr. Krieger, is that in the future, and it sounded like the future maybe was within the next three, four months, that you're going to be able to have some national data or peer group data, is that, is that possibly also broken down by Arizona, so that we can compare our results to our region?
That's a good question, and I would need to look into how many districts, specifically in Arizona, we've administered this climate survey in. Certainly, some sort of regional comparison is something that we would aim to provide, but whether it would be at the state level or kind of a Southwest region more broadly, I'm, I'm not sure at this moment.
Okay, and what is kind of your anticipated date of that? Is it, is it in 2020?
Was that another question? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm just wondering if you had an anticipated date. Is it, is it going to be in 2020 that we would get this information?
So I have heard Q1 sometimes. I don't have a specific calendar date, but I'm currently following up with some of our IT and technology folks to see where we are in that problem.
All right, great, thank you. I had a question also on the, kind of the timeline and what happens. So as, as I heard you mention, you said it's assessment, plan, and implement. So the principals have gotten the information, then in January, they'll be meeting with their staff. Do they then get together and collaborate, you know, what do we want to do? And so each site will then come up with recommendations and a plan, and then do they discuss that with our elementary and secondary supervisors, and then does it come to cabinet? Then does it, what happens at that point prior to implementation? Because there may be needing to have different training or additional programming or something, and when does that?
Right, and that's why we said in cabinet before break, when this was coming out, that the first thing we needed to have schools do is have an, is do the assessment so that we can then gear the training to the schools to their needs. So Dr. Sakos or Dr. Hagegat want to address that?
Yeah, I'll jump in, actually, yes, yes, today I was meeting with the schools, and one of the topics that we were discussing was the results of the survey, and just a very quick overview and a quick, just looking at what are some of the areas that are really popping, whether it be student-related or with the community, and so we're hoping to be able to do that with all of the sites after they have an opportunity to review that. I'm scheduling time to be able to meet with the elementarys so that they can share what it is that they're finding that they may need support with, and what are some of the areas that we can celebrate, because in some of the schools, I reviewed the outcome, the individual outcomes, and you can really see the relationships and the trust that the community is building or has had with those leaders and that staff. And so we'd like to make it for celebrations, but also to really pinpoint what are the areas that we really need to look at so that we can put some strategies in place that we are able to move into a positive direction as we continue to do surveys such as this one.
So the next step, you're meeting individually, working with the, the principals, then the next step is?
Identifying.
Identifying, and bringing the principals together, because there are going to be some similarities, and there'll be some grouping of the, of the principals for the, for the training of the schools, right? So that, that's scheduled for?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and add to what Dr. Hagegat said, since the data's come out, like I had two meetings today with administrators on midterm evaluations, and any type we have a new set, a data set, we begin to say, have you read this? What are some ideas? And we sent out some ideas prior to break on, to think about how will you outreach to your stakeholder groups, from students to teachers to staff to your PTO, to your site council, what will that look like? As a group, we have our, our breakouts, elementary, middle, high school have separate breakouts, January 23rd, we come back together, all administrators, February 6th, we meet with Student Advisory Board or Superintendent Advisory Board, February 19th. Embedded within all of that is some training pieces on assessing strengths and challenges of PBIS student assistance programs, so that is, and those are things that began at the beginning of the year, but this gives us a heightened reminder that we need to, you know, really go back and assess where we are, because some schools, very well-intended, are doing some great things, but we're missing some pieces. So this will give an opportunity to reassess where we are with the fidelity and implementation of PBIS, and then look at our data and where are those gaps in which we need to provide supports for students, so.
And then the, the current training that I talked about, some of it is for administrators and, and some key teachers, some of it, some of it's for all staff, is going on this month in the first part of February as well. So it's all this is going on at the same time, it's not just linear.
Yeah, and I just have to reiterate how exciting it is to have the CHAROS who are interested in supporting social-emotional learning, ASU, the Watt College of, of Social Work, and so we have a lot of great support coming from our community this spring, and, and I really envision how we can continue to enhance these services moving into next year with the continued support from the community, because it is such a national topic and a hot topic, so we have everyone's attention now that this is a heightened area of focus for us.
Board member Greenberg.
I would like to make the point that, given the results that we are looking over, I think it does highlight the need to continue listening to students and even improving the methods we do so and their involvement in our district, I mean, we hopefully live to serve them, so, you know, I think that's, that is certainly, there is some, there are some disparities here in this data, and that just further underscores how important it is that we continue with some of the work we have already done, thanks to our board president, vice president, and many members around this table, and others not here, but continue on that path and further integrate their, their views.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the work that has been led with the teen town halls, so some of what you see here in this quantitative data was shared with us from our teens that first spoke at one of our first teen town halls, and we have an upcoming one, with two more upcoming ones this spring, and so that is an avenue for student voice, along with the superintendent advisory board groups going back and being that conduit to their campus, to be able to engage with administrators to say, we want to have these conversations, we want to have these focus groups. So we're also trying to, to help our campuses to have some student-led, healthy conversations at the campuses that involve social workers, counselor, school psychologists, that can lead those, sometimes what is difficult conversations.
And I thought that was a great event, and I'm very happy that they are going to continue, and I appreciate all the work, as I said, that everyone's doing, and I think we can only go up from there, so, thank you.
Still a lot of work.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I think that, that often we do forget it, and I think it does show in there that we need to listen and respect our students.
If I, if I may, at the, at the risk of sounding self-serving, but I have nothing to serve, I have no motivation to go, but I, I think the significant growth in a parent and community sense of engagement and their support of the overall direction of the district is significant, because as we look at the other areas of need, if you didn't have that sense of they're with us, it's going, it would be much more difficult. So I was obviously quite delighted to see the recommendations when they first came out, and, and the first one saying that, that we grew significantly in the trust, it, it backs up to what happened with the override election as well. So we are, I believe firmly that we are going in the right direction, and we have people coming along with us, which is, which is even more important, and, and hope, and I appreciate President Beckham's campaign speech and her planks of her platform, and, and that we will continue to advocate for collaboration and, and continue moving forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Brand, thank you so much for coming and telephonically, I, I imagine that's not always easy when you can't see us. Thank you very much for the survey and for going over the results with us. Do you have anything else, Dr. Krieger?
No, thank you, Garrett.
I've been glad we were able to discuss. Have a good night all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent.
The leader has disconnected. The conference will be terminated in five minutes.
That was going to be a countdown. Five, four, three.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, six, eight. Do we approve the? Consent. And we need to approve the consent agenda first, and then go to it. So I move that we approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion or some? Second. Second. Board member, Vice President Beckman seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, five to zero. Next is the action item 7A, which is a second read and approval of revisions to policy IJNDB, Use of Technology Resources Instruction, and JICH, Drug and Alcohol Use by Students. Do I have a motion? No, we have, we're having a. Oh, I am so sorry. I believe that our general counsel, Ms. Marshall, will be presenting this proposal.
Thank you, President Beckham, members of the board. You'll recall that you reviewed these two policies, IJNDB and JICH, at your last meeting of 2019, December 17th. At that meeting, you, some of you requested that we have additional communication with employees regarding the content and proposal on IJNDB. Also, at that meeting, just as a reminder. Also, at that meeting, just as a reminder, Debbie Spalding, our head of IT, and I also let you know that we do have annual training for employees on this topic through our online Moodle training, which is, this is one of the mandatory topics, as well as I present a couple of live optional trainings for those who can't do it online or don't want to do it online. In addition, since that time, we put an update for all employee groups in the employee newsletters, just letting them know what these recommendations were, so that communication has occurred. I was not asked by the board members to make any additional changes to this policy, but I will give you an opportunity to follow up, ask questions, or request any changes before I move on to the next one.
Does the board have any questions from Ms. Marshall?
Okay.
No.
The other policy that I mentioned is policy JICH. There we go. Which is called Drug and Alcohol Use by Students. Again, I was not asked to make any additional changes to this policy at our December 17th meeting or since, but you may have a different thought today. During that meeting, I'll remind you that I was, I was asked about the use of the word toxic in this policy, which is in this first paragraph here. Students on school property shall not knowingly breathe, inhale, or drink a vapor-releasing substance containing a toxic substance. As I emailed you earlier this week, that comes directly from the Criminal Code, ARS 13340138, which has definitions for various drug offenses. And I also looked at our code of conduct for students, and this definition is also included as a definition of drugs under our Appendix A to that code of conduct. With that, if there are any questions or comments or, or discussion wanting to see any other changes, I'll open it up for you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve policy J, IJNDB and JICH as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Say it. Board member Kravitz made the motion and Board member Greenberg has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. I will have that updated on our online policies. Thanks.
It looks like that is the end of the agenda. So I move to adjourn special session dated January 7, 2020 at 7:05 PM. Second. Board member Kravitz, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed.
The meeting is adjourned at 7:06.